Good evening, everyone. I am Chris Scott, the Enterprise Editor at The Sun. Thank you for coming out on this Monday evening for another one of our candidate debates in Drakett. We've been doing these now for several years. I'd like to thank the town of Drakett for accommodating us. I'd like to thank Dave Paquin for setting up the hall for us as usual. Thank you, David. I'd like to thank the town manager, Jim Duggan, and Drakett Access TV. With me here this evening is the reporter who covers Drake and Tinsborough Forest, Amaris Castillo. Amaris, thank you for coming out this evening. Tonight, we only have one contested race. That's for the Board of Selectmen. You'll see that I arranged the nameplates in alphabetical order. We'll start with Selectman Archinsky, Challenger Bond, Brian Bond, and incumbent Jesse Forcey. You'll notice that there's a vacant seat at the table. That was going to be occupied by Mr. Joyce. However, Mr. Joyce, after telling us he would attend, apparently is going to be a no-show this evening. So that's too bad. We'll just go with these three folks. Just a couple little ground rules to begin with. I'll pose the questions. We'll get going right away. We'll start in alphabetical order with Selectman Archinsky. The candidates will have one minute to respond. And if other candidates want to rebut or get involved in the conversation, they're certainly welcome to do that. At about 10 minutes of 8, we'll stop and then we'll do a two-minute closing statement. There are no opening statements. Is that okay with you guys?
Good to meet you.
Okay. So without further ado, let's start with the first question. Tony, this will go to you. Should the town of Drakett institute a fee or a tax to raise enough revenue to comply with federal regulations regarding stormwater runoff?
Wow, you're gonna hit me over the head right from the get-go, huh? Gee, thank you.
Well, it has been in the news.
Yes, it definitely has been in the news. First, I think we should start off with explaining what the MS-4 permit is and what it is that we're expected to do. It's a federal mandate that wants us to clean up our waterways. And there are 260 communities in Massachusetts that fall under this MS-4 permit. Nobody wants to do this, I can tell you. It does not leave us with a lot of good choices. You know, there's three choices that we have in Drakett. We can violate the law, we can charge a fee, or we can take from our existing budget. Not real good choices any way there is. So my first question to the town manager was, what is it exactly that they want us to do for $900,000 a year? It seems to me like $900,000 a year is a lot of money just to sweep the streets. So I had a meeting with the town manager, and I got a little bit closer to having him explain to me some of the things that will happen under this MS-4 permit.
Tony, your time is up, so you have to answer the question.
Okay, all right. So anyway, with everything that has to be done with the MS-4 permit, I can tell you that if we don't do anything, we will get an administrative consent order just like we did with the sewerage and with the town hall. I don't want to see that. But I am not inclined to set a fee for people. I have supported the last three overrides in town that went down in flames, all three of them. So I will not be voting to set a fee for the MS-4 permit. And if I have more time later on, I'll explain to you what I think we should do.
Okay, thank you. We'll probably come back to that. Challenger Bond?
First, let me thank the Lawson for putting this event together, and DA TV showing up and letting it air live for all the folks to see what's really going on in town here. And again, this hall, I haven't been here in this hall for some time. And I spent a lot of time here with Harvey Gagnon, so I just wanted to mention his name again, too, because Harvey was a great guy. And that's why we've got this facility here. So stormwater. First off, I would have advised the town manager a long time ago to set up an account. You know, this storm mitigation's been coming for two to three years now. So I don't know why, you know, all of a sudden it's becoming an issue with the sitting selectmen. They should have been proactive on this instead of reactive. They should have taken some funds, again, previously, taken some funds out of the stabilization fund, take some of the free cash funds, put maybe 50% of new growth into that account, maybe 50% of the new marijuana fees coming in, and not give out big pay raises and new positions, you know. They knew this was coming. They should have been proactive instead of reactive. And I'm 100% against any fee for this program at all. And I'd like to hear my opponent say they're 100% against any fee. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we'll stay on this question for maybe a little bit of time. Jesse?
Okay. It'd be easy for me to just say no, but, I mean, as a selectman, I have a responsibility to the entire town. It's easy to just throw that out there, no. I've asked the manager, we've all tasked him to come back. And it's incorrect that we just started asking about this scenario. And we have secured some funds, and that's how we're paying for the stormwater manager right now. But I'm very concerned about the fee. Not only the burden on the residential tax base, but small business. You're talking about somebody who maybe owns a business in town and lives in town. They're gonna get double-hit. And, you know, somebody who owns a small business in town, the profit margins are as tiny as it is. So I certainly don't want to push those businesses to another town. So short answer, I will not be supporting, 100%, will not be supporting a stormwater fee.
Thank you. Selectman Archinsky, you want to come back on that?
Yes. Well, I want to echo what Jesse says. I don't know where anybody's getting the idea that we were for a fee. I've never said I was for a fee, and I'm not for a fee. I did sit down with the town manager, and we discussed how we can mitigate the impact that this is gonna have. We talked about taking capital equipment out of free cash one-time, a one-time, what I'm looking for, a one-time spend of, you know, so that we can buy a street sweeper and, you know, other equipment that's gonna be needed. Some of these things, like if they go out and they check on a culvert, and the culvert has been collapsed, they can't just drive away from the culvert. The culvert has to be fixed. And some culverts are very expensive. We have a culvert out on Sawmill Drive right now that's put together with chewing gum and tie wire. And it needs to be fixed. And it's thousands of dollars to fix the culverts.
Okay, wrap it up, please.
If they find culverts like that, those have to be done. So, for example, I met with the town manager on Friday for two hours. When I went into the office, there was a $200,000 delta that the school department was gonna have to absorb. When we walked out, it's now down to $100,000. So we're constantly working to try to mitigate the impact of the program.
Mr. Bond?
All right. So again, I get to the point that, you know, this has been coming for a couple of years. Now, he's talking, he's just doing these things, right? So again, there's those that do and those that don't, too. And you know what the difference is? Those that do, do. And those that don't do, don't do. And my opponents, they don't do it. They just don't. They seen this coming two years ago, and they did nothing about it. You know, again, they should have been proactive a long time ago. What we need to do now is we need to stall this for at least a year. We need to explore all options, whether we're gonna subcontract out, we're gonna delegate to existing employees, we're gonna stop planning, as I noted above, you know, previously. You just can't, you know, because this became a campaign issue, all of a sudden they're talking about it. If it wasn't a campaign issue, they would just be rubber-stamping what the manager wants. Somebody's gotta be on the purse strings and put a hold to this. Somebody's gotta stick up for the taxpayers 'cause enough is enough.
Well, you guys have an opportunity to respond to that. Jesse?
Like I said, it's very easy to throw out, just, "I'm not for it," you know, and no idea where we're gonna get the revenue.
I just stated where we're gonna get the revenue.
Just unfinished, please. Okay, go ahead.
Again, like I said, this is something that we take very seriously. We've asked the manager to come back. This all started a couple of years ago. We thought this would be taken back by the new President National Administration. We pushed it down the line a little bit in hopes that we didn't have to spend that money. I don't agree about taking out the money from stabilization or free cash. It's something you can do to sustain a cost such as this. But again, you know, I don't just throw that out there. There is gonna be consequences, and people have to understand that without, you know, charging a fee. But those are the type of things that, you know, will weigh out at Selectmen.
Tony, you rubber stamp for the town manager?
No, no.
Okay, let's move on.
Can I just move on? I just want to respond to Mr. Bond. I think he might have the saying wrong. Those that do, 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 do. I believe that those that do don't care who gets the credit, and those that don't do will take credit for just about anything. And by the time this night is over with, Mr. Bond will take credit for just about everything that's ever happened in this town. But don't take my word for it. Just listen to what he has to say.
Well, I appreciate your support there, Tony. And, you know, maybe we can get to this a little bit later, and Tony can explain to us all the things that he has personally proposed, that he has personally led to get done. And that's a question we can talk about later.
Okay. Let's move on to another topic right now. I think we've hit that pretty good. I learned today that when Town Meeting convenes in June, Mr. Bond, this question will go to you. The Town Meeting will be asked to approve an article which proposes to have the town manager's salary and the school superintendent's salary set by Town Meeting, not by the school committee and/or the Board of Selectmen. Would you be in favor of that?
Yes, I would, because in the end, they're the taxpayer. They're the people that are footing the bill. And, you know, that's a good way to kind of curb the spending, again. You know, I think the manager and the superintendent have done a great job. And I think they've earned some of their pay. But their pay is getting pretty high right now. And again, we're sitting here talking about raising fees for the residents of Drakett. We've currently got the high school we're still paying for, the greater Lowell Oak, we got a fire station, we've got all kinds of funds, you know, that we're paying, you know, the community preservation fee. We need to give the taxpayers a break because enough is enough. So let them give their input at Town Meeting on pay raises for those folks.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Forcey?
As far as I know, the motions are gonna be put forward or out of order anyway. But no, I don't think it's a good idea.
Pardon me?
I believe that they're gonna be out of order.
Ruled out of order.
Correct.
Could you expand on that, please?
It's in the town charter, written in stone, that the Board of Selectmen hires, and depends, and the school committee likewise with the superintendent, that they decide the pay and hire of the administrator. We're elected as Board of Selectmen to do that, to manage the town manager and decide on his pay.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Tony?
I agree with Jesse. It is in the charter that we're the ones that hire and set the salary for the town manager. I was one of the town manager's biggest supporters when we gave him that raise. He was making $143,000 a year, which was less than just about every other town manager in the area. There was a very, very strong rumor that city manager Kevin Murphy was going to leave Lowell. He was making about $195,000. He eventually did leave. It would not have been a big jump to believe that our town manager, who started his career in Lowell, may know a few people in Lowell and might have jumped to Lowell for an additional $60,000 a year for a six-mile drive to Lowell. So I supported the raise. In fact, I probably was the one who recommended it.
Thank you. Brian, any more rebuttal on that?
Nope.
Next question, sticking with the schools, we'll go to Selectman Forcey. The town's funding of the school department seems to be an annual issue up here. People talk about it not being enough. Does the town fund its school to a proper level? And if not, how can that be achieved?
I mean, no, I don't think they fund it, fund the schools at a proper level. But, I mean, there's only so much that the town can give. We, as a Board of Selectmen and the town manager, have done everything possible as far as finding up free cash. We were looking into helping to fund the transportation budget to close that gap. So, I mean, there's never enough, I don't think, as far as when it comes to funding education. But again, we've made every possible effort, whether it be finding any sort of funding for the school. And I helped lead an operational audit of the school department in collaboration with the Education Subcommittee, and to hopefully further increase the transparency between the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. And hopefully, there's more ways that we can help.
Selectman Archinsky?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we've made a concerted effort to fund the school department best we can. I know that the Board is unanimous on fostering a better relationship with the school department. When I first became a selectman six years ago, you know, I wonder if the Selectmen even spoke to members of the school committee. We all have a very good relationship now. I think four out of the five people that are sitting on the school committee are supporting my candidacy. We want to continue to foster a good relationship with the schools. And from that will come better funding as some of these new businesses come online.
And Mr. Bond?
I agree with my opponent here that, no, we don't fund the schools enough. But we fund them what we can afford to fund them. And we all wish we could give more. I think one thing that this town does is, when money gets tight, there's some fear-mongering that goes on where they try to pit the schools against the town folks. And I can see that starting to happen now. And, you know, that's really disappointing, because I do think that the town governments have been getting along well. But I see that starting to head in the other direction. And, you know, when I talk about, you know, trying to, enough is enough with the taxes, I'm not talking about, you know, taking money away from the schools or different departments, you know. And so that's the fear-mongering that goes on. And, you know, I've always been a big supporter of the schools, and I want to continue to see the schools do well. But we need the whole town to do well along with that. So I'll be a big supporter of the schools.
Say for, so you all agree that the schools aren't funded to a level that you would like to see, correct?
Correct.
All right. Say, for instance, you get to a point where you have to either fund the sewer project or fund a big capital improvement in the schools. Who, what do you pick?
I think you gotta, you gotta really be more specific.
Hold on, Jesse, hold on. Jesse, you can go with this.
Yeah, I agree with Brian. So funding a big capital project, like a big capital repair?
Well, yeah. Or say, for instance, the state says the town's not funding schools to a proper level, which they can do. You know, that is one area of the municipal budget where the state has a considerable amount of impact.
Correct. I think, I mean, the state does dictate a bare minimum, which we certainly don't want to see. But ultimately, that means it's coming from somewhere else. I mean, if we're dictated by the state to give the school a certain amount of money. And again, we've tried to exceed that number. I think we're at over nine, I believe we're at $900,000 over. That's something we, you know, we try at every day. So I guess if we have to fund the stormwater, and the money is between there and the schools, the money's gonna come from somewhere else.
Tony?
I don't know. I mean, I guess if we were faced with a federal mandate, we may have to look at...
Such as Lowell. Lowell has that federal mandate.
Right. Yeah, I would say we'd probably have to fund the federal mandate.
And Brian? I'm sorry, I interrupted you before. I apologize.
What I'd say is that, you know, you really gotta take a look at each item. And you can't do, you know, what-ifs, because what-ifs aren't reality, you know. So if you tell me that the roof is leaking and the kids can't go in the classroom, or fund a certain fee, then I'm gonna fix the roof. I'm gonna look at each particular project and kind of rule it on its own merit. I'm not gonna rubber-stamp, you know, whether, yes, I'm gonna go this way, or yes, I'm gonna go that way. I'm gonna evaluate the situation and go forward there. Which I think that's a normal way that we would all do it.
All right, thank you. I think, Tony, we're back to you on this question. As with many local communities, Drakett is trying to do its best to prepare for the sale of recreational marijuana. I believe in Drakett. Its sale was approved by Town Meeting in 2016. Then it was approved at the ballot box in 2017? Do I have that correct? Or is it vice versa?
Not sure.
Regardless, my question is, did the town, did the Board of Selectmen do its due diligence in preparing for the sale of recreational marijuana to the best of its ability, do you think?
Yeah, I believe, I believe we did. You know, when we first heard about marijuana coming online, I mean, there were probably 50,000 pages of state rules and regulations. And even the state itself wasn't sure which, you know, which rules and regulations they were gonna enact. So although there were some people that thought that we were dragging our feet, we were actually waiting to see what the state was gonna do so that we could fashion our own bylaws to reflect what the state rules and regulations were. So with that said, I think we did everything we can. We're in the process now of attaining two marijuana facilities. One, a cultivation dispensary, and another one, just a dispensary. I can tell people that in my own life, I've had issues, and I did not vote to legalize marijuana. I do believe, though, that it is legal, and I will vote to bring new business into town. The people have spoken, and that's what they want.
Thank you. Brian?
When this first came out, I was not a supporter of the program. I just thought it would make things a little bit more accessible for the kids. I really didn't support it. But, and I do think that the drug has a certain purpose. It can help a lot of people. I'm perfectly fine with recreational marijuana, I mean, excuse me, medical marijuana. I don't have an issue with that. So again, I did speak out against it. It was voted on at Town Meeting. And, you know, the will of the people spoke. And I don't have a problem moving forward with the will of the people, what they want to do. And so I would support businesses of that nature coming in. But no, you know, originally, I would not have supported it or pushed it like others have. I just think it's, it just gives too much access for the kids, an easier avenue to get it. I'm curious on the actual tax revenue that was predicted to bring in, whether that will actually be brought in. So we may have sold out short for a promise that may never come.
Thank you. And Jesse?
The question was, do I believe the Board of Selectmen has done everything they can? And I believe 100% we have. I voted, I mean, I saw it unfold in 2016, I believe it was, where it was at ballot box.
Oh, it was the ballot box first.
I believe so. And then it went to Town Meeting in 17, I believe. And I voted against the moratorium, because I kind of saw, as I said at Town Meeting, it's here, let's get ahead of it. You know, Drakett doesn't always have to be the last to do something. So I supported voting against the moratorium, and I think the town has done everything we can. I mean, this is something I've actually, not, you know, I want to see a new business come into town. But these are very particular special permits. And I've been basically dying to get my teeth into a special permit. It'll come from the planning board, you know, because these are very, you know, strict rules. So I think we've done everything we can to, and I think that'll show in, as in, two facilities come out. And in regards to, we don't know if the revenue will be there that we expected. As you get into these smaller recreational shops, the turnaround or the kickback to the town is not gonna be that great. It's the large-scale cultivation that we're really gonna, really gonna be the home run for Drakett. And that's something, you know, we're actively looking for. And that's where you will see, you know, the home run revenue source for the town.
Okay, thank you. Well, a Drakett debate would not be appropriate without a question about websites and the various social media happenings that occur in this town. So this next question will go to you, Mr. Bond, and that's just simply by coincidence. Do you believe a frequent poster to various websites in town by the name of John Cross is a living, breathing person? Or is there a ghostwriter behind John Cross?
You know, there's a lot of rumors out there, and one of those was you, Chris, that you were John Cross. Because you do know a lot about Drakett politics, right? So, you know, this John Cross...
I'm on the computer all day at work. I don't go on at night.
Yeah, yeah. But what I can tell you is I'm not John Cross, right? And I don't know who John Cross is. But Drakett being Drakett, and, you know, the, some folks are afraid to come forward and put their name on things because they're just, they're afraid of ramifications. And like, right now, I'm running a whisper campaign. And the reason why I say I'm running a whisper campaign is because in Drakett, if you, like, George signed my nomination papers first, and we joked with him, he was the first one to sign the papers for me. And I said that to him. I said, "Gotta thank you for that." And he says, "You know, nobody's talked to me since then," you know. And we joked about, "Do you still have all your fingers on there?" Right? So, you know, unfortunately, in Drakett, it's personal. Everything's personal. It's not politics. And I don't know if you'll let me continue for a few minutes. Maybe an hour. So I could talk about this all day.
You're wasting your time.
So it's really unfortunate, because I think we all want Drakett to move forward. And I think that, you know, some people, you know, they're afraid to come out and speak publicly because of ramifications. Somebody getting attacked, you know, where I'm not afraid to say something. You know, we go on our TV show, we talk about it. If we see any shenanigans going on, we talk about it. Because, and I get stopped, I'll be at the Hannaford, and I'll get stopped by a couple, some older couple, and they say, "You know what? I really like what you have to say. You don't hold any punches. You move it along." So, you know, I don't know who John Cross is, you know. Does he got, is he out of control at times? Yes. But, you know, he's got a right to do what he does.
But you say it's not you.
It's not me. And I don't know who it is.
Selectman Forcey?
I don't know what to say to that. I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone. The very issue that we're talking about is Mr. Bond's Facebook page and John Cross. Whether you know who John Cross is or not, you're fostering everything that he says on your page. You can edit that page. If someone were to come on my campaign page, which I keep positive, I wouldn't allow him to do it. The very reason the candidates aren't running for office in Drakett is because of this.
Hold on, hold on. Brian, hold on. You'll get a chance.
You want to say enough is enough. Enough is enough. Everything that's wrong with Drakett politics starts from here in his friends. I mean, I'm sorry to, you know, get fired up, but I mean...
Look, and I've asked the question, I think, three consecutive years. It seems to get worse each year.
Right. We're talking about it. We're not, you know, it's almost like we're not talking about the same thing. It's clearly everything that is wrong with Drakett politics stems from his page and another page, and anonymous posters. And if you don't think an anonymous poster should be saying what he's saying, then you just, you keep it off your site.
Selectman Archinsky?
Well, I would have to say that, you know, there were far too many important things going on in Drakett. So I really don't bother myself with some of the things that are on there. I'm not a member of Brian's page. You know, every once in a while, somebody may say, "Somebody said something bad about you on the page." And I'll admit that I'll go in and look at it. But I don't think that you should allow anonymous people to write on your page, because there's no accountability for it. They can say what they want, and they don't have to, you know, tell people who they are or what angle they're coming from.
So what you say is it's okay for the goose, but not the gander. Because there's another talking head that has a Facebook page who allows anonymous posts on there. But nobody seems to question that gentleman.
He's not here for the debate.
Hold on, let him finish. Please let him finish.
So, and what I'd like to say is, you know, I don't, that's not me posting, right? And if there's something on the page that is false, bring it forward, you know, and correct it, and we'll apologize for it. But, you know, the things that are said are typically true. And so, you know, we stand behind whatever I post. I put my name on everything. I don't have a problem with it, you know, so...
Jesse?
You're putting your stamp, you're putting your name on it by the fact that you're fostering these people who do it. So if you don't think, you think it's okay with a personal...
What's incorrect?
I'm not gonna dive down into your level and start calling you and telling you every personal attack...
Brian, let him finish. Let him finish.
Every personal attack that you've done, what are you, I'm gonna reach out to you every time one of your members or your fake profiles say something bad about somebody's family that I know, or somebody's kids, or attack us all you want. Attack the candidates, attack political, you know, figures. But when it gets down dirty with families...
Last crack, Brian. Last one. You can respond last time.
He's accusing, he's accusing me.
You cannot. Go ahead.
All right. I'd say, I'd like to see anything, you pick out something that's incorrect and prove that it's incorrect, and then we'll go forward, okay? If I bring out stuff, it has, if I personally bring anything out, it's a true statement, okay? And it's our opinion, and we can back it up. And so I think that you're, you know, you're spinning it in a direction that is incorrect. And you've got your spin machine working with you to help you do it. You know, that gentleman who's not here, you know, we've got a recording of him stating that he can create an image, and no matter what it is, he can say it, and the folks will believe it. And then he passes it on to the Lawson, and the Lawson runs it. And so...
If he was here debating with us, it would be relevant. I don't know what you're talking about.
Brian, would you go so far as to agree to not allow anonymous posts? If someone wants to post on the connection, by all means, have that. But they just have to put their name on it.
I'm one of many moderators on that site, number one, okay? And so, again, you pull something off of his comments, and if it's incorrect, then we'll pull it. That's all I, I'm gonna tell you that 99% of the stuff, and I don't read all this stuff, is probably true, okay? So you look at that, and if it's incorrect, we'll pull it off, you know?
Again, my question, would you agree to not allow, going forward, not allow anonymous posts?
He puts a name down. So, you know, if a post, if, I let, anybody post on it?
No, but you said earlier, you allow people to post anonymously, because people are sometimes afraid of retribution.
Absolutely. So, yes, I do.
So, if they don't want to put their name on it...
People are afraid of ramifications. People are afraid to speak their mind. And somebody has to speak up. Somebody has to stand up for the folks that are afraid. So, and I'm that guy.
And you believe that you?
And I'm that guy.
Okay.
You know, so if somebody's bullying, and they're afraid to stand up, then I'm the guy who will come forward and stand up for the guy who's afraid. That's me.
All right, let's move on. Next question goes to Selectman Forcey. How would you rate the performance of town manager Duggan, Jim Duggan, excuse me, and the direction of the town under his leadership?
Well, I rated him at our last... Well, I rated him at our last evaluation at a four out of five over, I believe it was nine different categories. I've been a supporter of Jim's. I've been a, you know, a, let's say a detractor of Jim's, but I've been, you know, certainly not afraid to voice my opinion to Jim. I think he does a great job with economic development, certainly under the direction of the Board of Selectmen. We've had our issues, you know, put it this way, I, you can quote me from the Lowell Sun that I said he was a, let's say he was rough around the edges, but I think that's maybe his only minus is that. But I've been a big supporter of Jim's for the beginning. I think the economic development and the investments in the public safety and going back, the investments in the, in his cooperation with the superintendent have been fantastic. And I've been supporter, a big supporter of that.
Thank you. Selectman Archinsky.
Well, actually, Jesse, I think you got the saying wrong. I think I was the one that said he was rough around the edges. You said that he was a bull in a china shop.
Bull in a china, yeah.
But again, I was on the original Board of Selectmen that hired Jim Duggan. He gave us some guarantees, you know, that he would be all in. He moved his family to this town. I think that he has shown that in many, many ways that he supports the town. I believe that we should support him. I gave him his highest evaluation the first time around. This time, I think I came in second as the second highest evaluation. Again, I like what he's doing. He's a go-getter. He's, he's, he's got his fingers in a lot more things than what the people know now, you know, that he's working on to bring in more economic development. You know, there will be other announcements in the future. And I just like the way he operates. I still believe, I still believe that he is a little rough around the edges. We get complaints sometimes that, you know, that he has an imposing whereabouts. But other than that, I support Jim Duggan, and I hope he stays in this town for a very long time.
Thank you. And Brian Vaughn?
I think it's strange that my opponents say he's a little rough around the edges, and they refer to him as a bull in the china shop. But if, if you know Drake politics, you know I've been referred to as a bull in the china shop many times, and, and I've got a lot of things done as well. And, you know, I hate to bring up all the stuff that I've worked on because Tony gets upset, and, but we'll talk about that in a little bit later. But I do think that Jim Duggan's done a great job. I don't agree with all the things that he's done. There's some things that I definitely disagree with, but I think he's done well, and I would not like to see him go anywhere. And I kind of refer to him, and I know I probably shouldn't, as he's kind of like Tom Brady, you know what I mean? He's, he's the guy, you know, you give him the ball and you let him run. But, you know, the, there's somebody that coaches Tom Brady, and that's Bill Belichick. And those folks should be the Board of Selectmen. Bill Belichick should be the Board of Selectmen's folks. So I think the board really needs to take a little bit more direction and, and set him in different ways, different goals, and then get things done rather than letting him call all the plays.
So you want to be the Bill Belichick of the Board of Selectmen, is that right?
Pardon me?
Do you want to be the Bill Belichick of the Board of Selectmen?
Sure. I think the whole board in general, all the board, all five members need to be Bill Belichick, not one individual, right? And they really need to set the game, set the game rules, the game, the drive, and give it to the manager to get the job done. That's what I think needs to be done. I don't think that's been done. I think the manager has basically done what he's wanted to do.
Tony or Jesse?
I'll disagree with that. I have at the least daily conversations with the town manager. A town manager is not going to, never going to get anything done in the town without the support and the guidance from a Board of Selectmen. So to say he's out running his own show is completely false. If you don't know, you know, you could throw that state, again, you could just throw out these wild statements. It's, it's not true. He gets everything from a supportive Board of Selectmen. That's how, that's, he works for the Board of Selectmen. That's where he gets his guidance from.
I also speak to the town manager almost on a, on a daily basis, sometimes twice a day. I worry about, you know, Brian getting in there and, you know, questioning why the electricity bill is $12 more this month than it was last month while the town manager is out there negotiating an $80 million economic development plan. I mean, sometimes you've got to let a professional do what a professional does.
Mr. Bond, I assume you want to respond to that?
Well, he's just trying to jab me, you know? He doesn't, he's not going to bother me. Tony is somebody who likes to spend other people's money. I've been self-employed for 30 years. I spend my money. I generate a payroll every month. Tony spends everybody else's money. And so it's easy for him. I'm much more conscientious about funds and spending than he is. Enough is enough with the taxes and fees and-
I thought we were talking about the town manager.
We are talking about the town manager. But, you know, we're talking about-
Well, don't think, don't think that you can't throw a jab at me and I'm not going to throw it back, Brian. Just, just saying.
That's okay. You're welcome on the show anytime you want, Tony. But you thought our viewers were deplorable, so you never showed up.
Okay, let's, okay, okay. Sticking with the town manager for just a second, and this next question will go to Tony. We all know that one of his great successes has been economic development and bringing some, expanding the town's commercial tax base. Is it at all remotely possible that there's been enough commercial development to take care of any fees that would resolve the stormwater issue? Tony?
I don't know that, but I can tell you that-
Well, isn't that something that you guys ought to be looking into?
I can tell you that we are, we are absolutely, you know, this is still a moving target. We are still discussing how we're going to mitigate the cost of the stormwater program. I want to see some more figures. We are going to discuss it at the Board of Selectmen meeting tomorrow night, and that's when we'll get to ask more questions. And again, I was misquoted the other night when I said that-
Not in the sun.
No, no, by, by one of the candidates here.
Or the Drake Connection.
That said that, you know, that, you know, our last meeting was the first time that we've ever talked about stormwater management. What I actually said was, our last meeting was the first time that I had ever seen the specifics of the plans. It's on the tape, Brian. You can go look at it. So the specifics of the plans were just, were just brought to us two weeks ago. We've been working on stormwater management for a long time. I went to the first stormwater management meeting sponsored by NemCog five years ago with Chairman Kathy Richardson. And so we know that it's been coming, and we've been preparing for it. And, and we actually funded it, you know, at the last-
Thank you, Tony. Brian?
So, so you've done nothing for five years? That's what I just heard? Because, again, it's really just coming up within the past few weeks because we started talking about it on the Drake Connection. And, and, and we were concerned about it. And all of a sudden, that's, you know, social media starts chattering about it, and then it becomes a campaign issue. Honestly, I haven't seen any campaigning out of you two folks at all. And, and, you know, we had to beg the Lowell Sun to get a debate, you know, so, and we, I tried to get one with Bill Gilman, you're on Drake today. And, you know, so, five years ago, you started talking about it, and then all of a sudden, now it's, the town's talking about it two weeks before the election, and we've got a town meeting coming up, and now it's become a concern? So maybe it's been five years.
Jesse?
Yeah, back to the question. There was, the money is not there from the current economic development. Those, those buildings have just come online. There's TIFs, tax incentives, that are, that are expiring at some point. One of the options even that I understand the manager was looking at for a fee was having a sunset on it. Because as these things come into line, as recreational marijuana come to fruition, but currently, the economic development money is unfortunately not there right now.
Okay. And for the record, no one begged the Sun to do a debate. I reached out to all of you guys, and you all immediately responded.
I did reach out to Amerisum, correct?
Okay. Let's, let's move on. Our next question to Brian. Brian, do you envision the town of Drake, Drake's commercial tax base to be large enough to ever support a dual tax rate, similar to what the town of Chelmsford just instituted?
Honestly, I'd love to see it at a dual rate at some point in time. I don't think it's there yet, but I would encourage our growth to get to that point and to help the residential base, because the residential base in this town is struggling. And it's one of the key things that I ran on during the show. I had a 71-year-old gentleman call up who was trying to opt out of the CPC tax because it was killing him. You know, that $70 a quarter was just really hurting him. He only had enough money to survive in his house for two and a half more years, and then he was going to be out on the street. So we do need to find another way to generate some revenue in this town. And the commercial tax base would be great, and we need to keep working in that direction to get it.
Okay, thank you. Jesse?
I certainly would not be one right now to advise for a split tax rate. I mean, I go back to what I talked about during the stormwater fees. We have been small business-friendly, economic development. I ran on that. That's something this board has been, and the town manager has been working very hard. If I want to, the last thing I want to do at this point is push out a small business or a large business. So I think maybe that's something to explore in the future as, if we ever get to that point where, you know, commercial gets under, above that 10%, but I don't see that happen either with the residential growth.
Tony?
Yeah, I'm going to make it easy. I, this question has come before the Board of Selectmen six times over the last six years that I've been on the board, and I am not in favor of a split tax rate. I don't think it's a good idea to start charging businesses more money when we're trying to foster new growth.
Okay, thank you. Next question, I believe, will go to Jesse. Town meeting in June will be asked to approve, if I recall, about $2 million from CPC money to install a new turf down the street at the football field and improve some other fields and infrastructure around the community. Do you think that that's a good use of that money?
Yeah, absolutely. I've been a supporter of that from the get-go. I've done a lot of collaboration with the school committee on that. Myself and Joe Wilkie were on, we did some stuff on DATV, and I've been in conversation with the manager and the superintendent throughout. I think it's the perfect use for CPC funds. Any, you know, the kids at the, the high school kids and, you know, even Pop Warner and lacrosse and soccer, they deserve something like this. They deserve that field. The field conditions are unplayable. Last year, I was a coach for youth soccer. I think we missed the first three games because of the conditions over at Veterans Field. I mean, that, that is such a jewel for Drake, and for it to be unusable or in the condition it's in right now is unacceptable. But I will add one point to that. It has to be done right. I'm supporting it, but it has to be done correctly. It has some, you know, the drainage has to be done right. It can't just be a skimco. So, but I'm certainly, certainly a big, big supporter of that project.
Yes, I am also in favor of that project. I've been after, now, of course, my wife is in the audience, and she believes that the kids should actually play in the mud. So with that said, I, you know, my kids grew up and they played on poor fields, you know, the whole time they were there. I believe that, I've been after the town manager since he came on board to do something about Veterans Park. I remember Selectman Doug Willett, when we first purchased the LaChute property, said that if you're going to put a park there, you might as well bring a canoe. And you know what? He wasn't kidding. That's a very wet area. The drainage needs to be fixed in that park, and so I am all for that project.
Brian?
I coached 12 years of football, basketball, and baseball in Drake, also over at Greater Lowell. I, I've been on that field many times, and I agree, it is a mud field, and the fences are tight. There's a lot of issues with it. I was a community preservation vice chair. I was on that committee for 10 years. And when I was on that committee, that project was in front of us many times. It wasn't ready to bring to the, to the town yet. I can remember talking with George Malonis about that, and, you know, the, the folks on, you know, as I sat on different boards, football board, baseball board, the basketball board, and talked about that project moving forward. And I support it 100%. I've also supported, you know, and, you know, the different CPC projects in town, sitting on the CPC for quite some time, the preservation of the Sager Farm, the David Dubmer's Farm, the, the DEDAC, the DEDAC property over there. We've got the base, the football fields. Actually, two properties that are in front of the town, the town, the Selectmen now, the, the, the baseball fields on Hovey, at Hovey Field, the two additions, I brought those to the table on the CPC. Those are being completed now. The project on Bridge Street, the Greymont Avenue, the senior housing, along with a few other gentlemen, we drove that through three town meetings to purchase the land and get the $3 million worth of funding for that project. Those things are being completed now.
I'm going to give you the hook there. That's my next question. So that piece of property on Bridge Street, right, was purchased with the intent of the town building senior housing. The senior housing still isn't built. Who knows when that will be built? Is it time now to pull the plug on senior housing on that site and use it for, for some few, you all three mentioned the importance and the need for more fields. Tony, we'll start with you on that one.
Yeah, well, actually, it's, now is not the time to pull the plug on senior housing. We, we just opened the bids for a 60-unit senior housing development. 12 units are going to be low income.
I'm going to stop, I apologize.
And the rest will be moderate income. I have not heard who got the bid yet, but I, I know that it's a nonprofit agency. It'll be a 60-year lease where they will pay the town $15,000 a year, and they will have social services built for, you know, there for the seniors that will be using it. It's a long time coming. There is no federal money. There is no state money. This is the way it had to be done. And I think that you'll be doing a news story on this-
Yeah, sounds that way.
...within a week or so.
Okay.
So, this is, I get back to, you know, I asked my opponents, you know, what have you actually proposed and led in the effort to get done for the town of Drake, and they haven't answered that yet? This is a project that I, I was, again, along with other folks, I really drove this project. I was the bull in the china shop. I was the guy that went out there and, and got a group of folks together to get a conceptual plan to bring it to town meeting, two town meetings, to get the funding of almost $1 million to purchase the land. And then I reached out to Chairman Taylor and Joe DeRocco with John Zimmeti, and sat down, talked with those folks about building this out, brought it to town meeting for meeting for three million dollars worth of funding, and I'm glad to see this project go forward. It's not the project that we originally agreed with, and what we originally sold the town, because this is going to be turned over for a sixty-year project. It's going to be given to a private developer, and we're not going to put the folks in there, that thirty percent that we really wanted to get, and I think everybody can agree with that. We wanted the thirty percent.
Okay, wrap it up, please.
But I'm glad that this project is going to be completed, and I will support it. Thank you.
Selectman Forshee.
Yeah, today we, we inked a deal with Common Ground, which is a nonprofit, for sixty units of senior housing. For years now, we've known that there, that that money wasn't available to help, to support the thirty percent income bracket. For years, we've kind of known that there's going to have to be a spectrum. It has to sustain itself, so there will be some market rate in there, but I think it's in the forty-seven range. You know, and as, as you step down, excuse me, there'll be kind of brackets of medium income throughout there, but as far as sustaining itself, it can't without at least some units being market rate. But I'm very excited with this project. Again, I agree with Mr. Bond. It's not exactly what we, we set out to do years back, but this is what, this is the deck we've been dealt, and this is what, we're going to make the best of that property. I think we'll be, you know, very happy with it when it comes to fruition.
Fair enough. Thank you. I'm watching the clock here. We're approaching ten of, so this is the one opportunity where you can ask one of your opponents a question. So Brian, we'll start with you. You can ask either Tony or Jesse a question. Same with Jesse, same with Tony. Brian?
Who first?
You.
All right. Well, I'd like to ask Jesse, you know, again, I go back to, you've been on the board for three years, you were on the Housing Authority for five years. You've got to name one project that you brought to the manager, or you brought forward that, that, and you led the effort to complete, not something that the manager brought to you and everybody voted on. What is that one thing that you brought to the table and, and has been completed in your, your term?
Again, I, to you, would have shocked this question, Brian. Again, I said it earlier, everything that the manager does comes from the direction of the Board of Selectmen. I've certainly fostered this project as it's morphed, the housing project. I've fostered that project for the manager to take that over, and the town of Drake to take that over, and to create senior housing. Again, this economic development, the preservation of land, the collaboration with the school department, all of it comes from leadership from the Board of Selectmen and its chair this year more than ever.
So you haven't brought a motion to the table for anything? You, you just, you've gone on the direction of the manager?
Okay, Brian, Brian.
I asked the question, you didn't answer the question.
The manager, the manager has gone on the direction of us, Brian.
I've never heard a motion with your name on it for the, to move in that direction.
Okay, Brian, Brian, he answered the question. Jesse?
I don't have any questions.
You don't have any questions?
No.
Tony?
Yeah, I have a question for Brian. Just out of curiosity, now, I, you know, a lot of times when you were on the Housing Authority, a lot of things went down four one, four one, four one, with you being the one. And I, I know that you pride yourself on, on being the lone wolf, but, you know, being the outdoorsman that you are, you must know that lone wolves usually die of starvation without the help from the pack. So I, I guess what I really want to know as a sitting Selectman is how are you, you, you do realize that you've been in government long enough to know that you need three votes on a five-man board to get anything done, anything done? Tell me how you're going to convince the other four members of the Board of Selectmen to do what you want them to do.
George, I, I, I'm, excuse me, Tony, I have a history of getting things done. You know, again, the, the projects that I worked on, and let me just read them to you, you know? The Dylan McInnesby Park, I, I was one of the people that brought that to the table. I worked on a committee, and I brought that to town meeting, and I brought it to, to purchase, I brought it through to fund it. I got things done. I sat in this hall many nights to get it done.
Those that do.
I've got a, I've got a history of getting things done, right? Again, the, the, the Drake, the Drake at Baseball Comedy Night.
Is he answering my question?
Tony, just let him finish. Come on, let him go.
I just wanted to answer my question. Okay. So the Drake at Baseball Comedy Night, I, I got that done. I was one of the members with Mike Kunsler, Larry Machado, Mike Parent, I probably missed a few. We, we all had an idea of building bathrooms for the, the Hovey Field, because we were sick of using the porta-johns. And our wives, like your wives, they don't like to play in the mud and go out in the woods or whatever.
Well, that certainly would get the three Board of Selectmen to go on.
Tony, so, wrap it up, Brian.
I'm showing you that I do collaborate with other people. So this, this particular, so we wanted to build that bathroom, so we, we formed a committee, and we started this comedy night. That comedy night's been going on about fifteen years now.
Okay, Brian, wrap it up.
They've done a lot of different things.
It's good to know that the Selectmen can go to the bathroom when they want.
Yeah, so, my, my comment is, I do collaborate with people. I've been the, you know, you ask any of the people that I've worked on these committees...
Brian, you're done. That's it. We have to do closing statements. It's five minutes of eight. Thank you. We'll start at the opposite end of the table this evening. So, Mr. Forshee, you have two minutes to tell the residents of the town of Drake at why they should vote for you on May sixth.
Thank you.
Take it away.
And I'd, I'd like to thank the Lowell Sun for having us, Ameris, Chris Scott, Bill Gilman, all the folks that came out tonight, and the millions at home who are watching. In my tenure as Selectman, we've had one of the most productive periods in Drake at's economic history. We've been better able to provide public safety services, education for our children, and keep taxes in a fair balance. We've created a business-friendly environment that resulted in over seventy million dollars in a new tax base. I cannot remember a time when the Selectmen and the school committee have worked this well together. We planned and executed a new security plan to protect our children. We performed an outside audit of the school department to further transparency between the town and the schools, and we worked together to put forward a plan to create an athletic complex second to none. I've been a huge advocate throughout my term as Selectman and the planning board of the CPC, and hope to continue to utilize that for, to preserve valuable open space. It's been an honor to serve as your Selectman, and I take this job very seriously, and I hope you will continue to support me, and I ask for your vote on May sixth.
Thank you. Mr. Bond?
So, I, I, I got into this campaign, again, because I was, we were having a Drake at Connection show, and a seventy-five-year-old gentleman called up, and he was trying to opt out of the CPC tax, because he just didn't have enough funds to survive in his house for two and a half years. So, you know, it's a daunting task, you know, they want to know so much information about, you know, your life and your, and, and so I reached out to the manager, and, and then I see another issue, you know, like, we're just, we need to start, we need to start exempting folks at seventy-five years of age or older, right from the CPC tax. And I want to exempt the first hundred thousand of the assessed value of everybody's home from the Community Preservation Act money, because, again, we've got about ten million dollars sitting in that fund. We've done a lot of great projects. We can start giving back to the community, right?